She'd give me the finger. Well, she'd let me know. We're on?
You're up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We were supposed to start budget meetings with various departments, but no one has their budgets in, right? Is that what I saw?
I believe they worked it with the finance committee.
Oh, they were?
Two out of four appeared tonight.
Robert came, sent the, did I see an email from Robert that he couldn't make it or something? So moderator in historical or?
Cemetery.
Cemetery didn't make it, right? The two you had come in? Which two did you have come?
Actually, I emailed because I work with these folks.
We had historical and veterans. We're finding that the spreadsheet is very difficult for smaller groups, not department heads, but the commissions and the volunteer groups. We think we can simplify that to them. But we are concerned that people do submit their budget requests in a timely fashion. We didn't see anything until tonight. We do have several, next week's people who submitted their budget requests.
So we do have people that have sent in for next week?
Yeah, I think three of the five. But we're slipping.
Would it help if we send out another memo to departments that budgets are expected to be in on time for whatever it's worth?
It would help.
It would help if the memo gets out, yes.
Would we please do that, Reg? Could we ask to get copies of the budgets that you did get? We didn't get them, Reg. I don't think.
We haven't gotten any, Riley, we're having to put it together.
Oh, I see, oh, I see there.
We received Donna's, we received Vicki's, and then the assessor gave us one in hard copy, not electronically. No, I mean tonight, but for next week. Those we received.
Well, whatever you can forward on to us, could we please get those?
Can I ask a question? Are we going to be redundant here and you say and we say because it seems like it's taking up a lot of time?
I think maybe we should talk about that. I think maybe we should, if we get the budgets in and we have any questions about it, and/or if they want to come to us for something.
Well, the only issue is if you say something, we say something, and, you know, the coordination is going to get messed up. So we need to have a plan.
Well, I guess, we need to, yes, we do.
I was going to say one thought is you want to send one representative to meetings with the board. There's one right here. From the board.
Our board, not?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Only one member from.
You may want to alternate that.
A bad idea is leave one here.
If you alternate, that way.
Actually, that wouldn't be a bad idea, that everybody takes a turn.
I think it's a darn good idea.
I think so, too. I think that would be a good idea. So we all get various, no one's overly burdened and taxed, and everybody gets a little taste of what's the budget process.
Yeah, I think that's a good one, yeah. So who wants to volunteer next week? Six o'clock.
Six o'clock gets difficult.
I'll do six.
I said I'll go. Who's next week?
I didn't mean to take.
Accountant, treasurer? No, I want the, I want like big, in-depth, lot to learn, lot of pieces. That's what I want. Is that next week?
Well, next week we have the town clerk, treasurer, collector, assessors, town accountant, and tree warden.
Done. I'll be there at six o'clock.
As one of the minor committees, historical, historical commission, I have to agree that the budget process for our small committee with a relatively small request is quite confusing. So we presented verbally tonight, and hopefully that'll get the majority. Basically, we asked for level funding, and we specified what our expenditures will be for fiscal 2015. I need, I do want to mention to the select board that for committees like ours, and I'm sure you're probably going to hear this from other people, too, I am assuming that the master plan implementation will probably not take place to any degree of expenditures of money in fiscal year 2015. And so therefore, we totally ignored what may be necessary for our charge to implement the master plan as voted on by the select board. So I have to say that our level funding submission is based on not having to take any money from our budget for that purpose.
How much money matters?
We're asking seventeen hundred dollars.
No, for the master plan.
Now, what was, what did they ask? What would your charge be for the master?
I have no idea.
Oh, okay.
Because, because, because there has not been enough discussion on the part of the master plan implementation committee. I believe they meet the first time tomorrow.
All right.
And, you know, I don't know, I don't know what sort of imposition there will be on committees like ours.
Well, it won't be a mandate for sure.
Well, I think if there's any funding, I think it should be, it should be coming out of the general fund and not out of your yearly budgets. It shouldn't be a burden on to you to do what you need to do.
It needs to be discussed.
Yeah. You need to plan for it, no matter.
Right. But it's not, my understanding is it's not going to be a mandate. It's more going to be like a gentle shove and trying to move everybody so that people aren't going in opposite directions as opposed to everybody moving in the same direction.
Some of which may require expenditure of money.
Some of which may require expenditure of money, which I'm going to anticipate is going to have to come out at the individual.
But that one happened in its own budget, the master.
Yeah, that's out of the master plan budget.
Yeah.
Would they implement that?
Yeah. Well, I think it should be.
If they need any money, they should have their own budget. I don't want to complicate.
Can't see some.
It is a consideration on committees such as mine.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you one quick question while you're here? The old firehouse, can we knock it over?
I'm not. I was not prepared to discuss that tonight. I'm going to tell you this. We will study it as a commission. It is in a national historic district, accepted by the state in a national historic district. It is a contributing building, which means that state or federal funds cannot be used to knock that building over. Further than that, I'm in the process of studying it. I did some work on that today and yesterday, and I'm hopeful that we will have a meeting with you folks to be able to tell you, advise you a little bit better about what is or isn't.
I'm sure you're aware of the structural concerns to the building, that there's three quarter million dollars' worth of equipment within the building, and yet the building itself does have these structural issues.
Does it have?
I know it does. I'm just, I'm very, you know, man, commonsensical. It's like, you know, we've got very expensive equipment in a building that needs either to be renovated or, you know.
Yes.
Not used anymore.
Yes.
Can I ask one question to you? Is there anything from the state or federal historical societies that would lend support to move that building somewhere else in town?
I think it would fall apart.
I'm just asking.
Okay.
I sent an email to Reggie today from the Mass Historical Commission for, there's a new round of preservation grants that is opening up right now, three quarters of a million dollars for purposes for preserving historical sites. This site might qualify. I do have to say that it is an extremely competitive grant. It's a matching grant. It's an extremely competitive grant. My personal opinion is that even if we put up a real strong case for it, that I doubt that we'd get. However, it's a personal opinion. But the answer to your question is there are, there are ways, there are grants available for that sort of thing, whether it qualifies or not, I don't know. But I think it's a subject that we will discuss within the next three or four weeks.
Yeah, one last thing is that, I mean, there is a, there's an aesthetic value to the structure, the brick layout and whatnot.
There's a historic value.
It does have, but also if we couldn't rehab or move the building, and we didn't use state or federal funds to remove the building, would the historical commission want to be involved in sort of preserving some of the aesthetic imaging on the new public safety, sort of, you know, some sort of facade that sort of mimics what the old station looked like, but in a new structure? You know what I'm saying? It just.
Yes. I would have to notify the rest of the, the rest of the commission. It's an ambitious project for us, if that's what you're asking. If you're talking about not using any federal or state funds, you can do whatever you want with it.
Thank you so much. Would community preservation funds be available for something like that?
Might be.
That's state-funded. Half of that, some of that money is state-funded.
The problem with that, good, bad, or indifferent is the building is in such poor condition as whether or anything can be done for it. We have at eight twenty, which is eight seventeen, we have a joint meeting with the Board of Health, Building Inspector, Town Accountant, Treasurer, Collector, Personnel Policy Procedure Board concerning the issue of part-time employees working under twenty hours a week. I was.
I'm sorry to interrupt. You have the Veterans Agent here. Did you want to?
Oh, that's right, too.
And I'm just wondering, I guess I have a question for finance.
I skipped, I'm sorry.
The two budgets that you were presented with, did, I mean, this is my first time going through this. Does there anything that raises any red flags that we need to think about or?
They're so small.
Well, that's what I didn't know. No.
Very small budgets.
We could double if you wouldn't notice.
Okay, so there's nothing, you know, you've got two today, and things are moving, and with those two, smoothly as you, as could go at the moment? Okay.
It's the, you know, the highway, the fire, the police, and those, treasurer and company.
Highway Department budget needs to be put together. I didn't do it because, who got to do it? And that was several months ago. It'll be a priority. I'll work with him this week on it to try to get that going. It might be, I think that's February fourth.
Yes.
I think that's reasonable, you know.
If not, just keep.
But I won't get anything right away to you. I know you have a deadline, I just want to let you know that I won't make that deadline, but I'll get you a copy.
If we need to move it, it was, I don't know, ahead of time?
I apologize, I skipped over a line on the thing for the Veterans Agent. My apologies. Can we, anything that you need to tell us, or?
I don't believe so. I don't think there are any questions, but it's pretty much the same as last year. Flux awaits. It's hard to predict.
Depending on the benefits that are given out.
Sorry?
Depending on how many people sign up.
Exactly. I mean, the first, the better half of this year, the budget, you know, I would have asked for sixty thousand for the year, because that's what we were paying. It was about five thousand a month. And since then, there's two cases that were terminated, one gained, but now we're up around, we're down to around three thousand a month.
But a lot of that gets reimbursed, right?
Seventy-five percent of that gets reimbursed to the town from the state. But then, in addition to that, with my stipend, the termality doubling, if you guys want to do that.
Have you looked at?
It's hard to predict, really.
But have you looked at trends of the past five years and over what was spent budget? Have you looked at the trending for the past five years?
I don't go back five years, no, but that's, that's, that would tell us something, that history, I mean, for this town.
Yeah, and then the other question, because I'm not exactly sure who qualifies. If it's, is it active veterans that qualify, or any veteran, or?
It's not any veteran. It's veterans as defined under Mass General Law 115. So, I mean, there's people that have served twenty years faithfully in the Army or Air National Guard, and they're not a qualifying veteran. Because they did not serve, they weren't engaged in any deployments. They're not in any deep areas of theater. They're not combat veterans, and they didn't do any active duty time. So it all depends.
Does Iraqi one and two in Afghanistan, as those are slowing down, troop deployment slows down, and the troops come back, how does that affect your budget? Are you seeing an increase or a decrease, or the same?
Doesn't affect it at all. It might, I'll just, the veterans that are collecting now, or widows of veterans are from World War II.
Okay.
Vietnam era.
Okay.
So in twenty years from now, it'll affect, but not right now. We did have one case from Iraq, you know, a younger gentleman. But he's, his, that's a terming, because he's collecting from another source, from the DA.
Thank you.
Is the job going where you expected it, or?
It is. It is. It's a little less, it's a little more than I expected, which is good. It's a lot more, there's a lot more details, a lot more than I could have ever imagined, but it's good for me personally, I'm learning a lot. And because of all these different programs and questions and things across my desk, it keeps me stimulated, so I'm enjoying it. I like it. I work with, of course, the accountants as far as submitting payment every month, and work with Donna and the Treasury Department, and it's balanced, you know, to the penny every month. So we just try to stand out with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz has a question.
I have a question for the Finance Committee. What can we do to help you with this process? I mean, with the exception of sending out memos and hoping that people respond with their budgets, is there any other steps that you think that we could be taking to move this along so we don't end up in the same spot we were last year?
Well, I don't think we would, because we've got, I think, everything out there. It's just a matter of getting them back. I think the key is if we don't get back next, what we need for next week, by a certain date, we need to tell you, and I think one even needs a call. Because there's certain department heads who are going to delay and, or not give us the information we need, and it's bad when they, you come to a meeting and, okay, where's all this backup? Where's this information? No, this is what I got. Okay, let's reschedule it. So people need to be prepared when they come.
What about the, when would you reschedule the moderator and the cemetery commission for?
Got to look at the schedule. I mean, they're small, so we have to extend our.
Well, I'm thinking if you, if we gave a memo, when you know that date, if we send a memo that you will be expected to, you know, make that warrant, not go with that date.
Are there any repercussions for not turning your budgets in on time? Is there anything you can do, and we're like, listen, you waited till the last minute, you're out.
Go watch, lady.
All you're saying, like, if people aren't going to, if this has been spelled out for months and months and months, and people aren't going to follow that.
Five percent budget decrease from last year.
What can you do, what can we do, what steps to say? Can you just get it in on time? If you don't? Well, maybe I won't make them cookies.
I'm just, there needs to be some follow-through, I think, and if a phone call from four seconds is what has to happen now.
I think I should call.
Thanks, there.
Well, I'll call.
I'm sorry.
February eleventh.
I'm sorry, February eleventh.
Okay, so Reggie, would you send out something from me to cemetery and moderator that their budgets must be in by February?
They're going to meet with us on February eighteenth. The budget needs to be in the week before that. So that'd be February eleventh.
The budget needs to be in February eleventh, and you?
Well, why are we giving them all that time?
They had time.
No, what I mean, it was due already.
Right, exactly, so.
So why don't we say it's got to be in two weeks from today?
And what about the two that you haven't heard from, from next week? Can we send them a memo that says, FYI, reminder, your budget is, you're due to meet with the Finance Committee next week?
And tree warden, David Garcia. He's away on vacation. Where's he at? Town clerk.
When's she's back? Those were due when? Oh, those are due next week.
Next week, so just a gentle reminder.
They were due yesterday.
Yesterday. And we're going to meet with them next.
So a reminder that they're due.
Now, for that?
Now.
Now. All right?
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the joint meeting with the Board of Health.
I'll be there at six o'clock.
Building Inspector, Town Accountant, Treasurer, Collector.
Got it.
Personnel Policy, but I've been informed that Personnel Policy is not attending?
So as, as far as I know, this meeting was first requested by the Board of Selectmen last week to kind of resolve the issue. The PQB met last Wednesday with Board of Health and Building Inspector, who also requested that the boards come together. Or if I missed your. So the Board of Health is not going to be around for the next week. So the first was to meet on Wednesday or Thursday. Was to meet on Wednesday or Thursday, and we had the opening, so we put it on today. The Board of Health would prefer that this topic was discussed in executive session with a mediator. I was hoping that this topic could be fixed by talking more about the policy versus the person in open session. That is not the opinion of Board of Health. Policies and procedures is not here. Well, two of us are here, myself and Art, and the other two are not.
Where did they think it was going to come under?
I think under litigation. Is that one of the ten?
No litigation pending.
No litigation going on here. It's just a violation of town by law.
Okay, so the PQB sent a memo stating that they thought that until, there, let me just get it.
And it's clear, we're not, let's be clear, we're not talking about the person.
No, we're talking about the policy.
Policy and position that is drawing a benefit.
It's in your page.
I know, I thought I had a hard copy of it, too, too. If you don't page it, tell me, Reggie. I think what really needs to happen here is that if the, if the PQB's not here in a hole to present their side of the story, I know that the Board of Selectmen has already given their opinion on what should happen based on the opinion of Town Council. That needs to be more clearly communicated to department heads, clearly. Yes, we're going to pay, or no, we're not, or no, we're not.
I thought we were clear the last time, but.
I thought that we were also very clear, but then the payroll was submitted again with, there's been payroll submitted with holiday pay. And so obviously, it's not been very clear.
Well, and there's a holiday pending on Monday.
Right. The memo from the Personal Policy Procedures Board said, "This is a formal recommendation that benefits for employees are not to be changed or discussed publicly until all parties are, and all parties involved have met and discussed the matter in person."
This is horse bucking. This is, this is the bylaws of the town that's been vetted by our Town Council. This is making something out of nothing, and it should not go any further. This person shouldn't be paid. They're working less than twenty hours a week. It's in black and white.
I would say that a, I guess maybe a phone call needs to be made to all department heads, not a memo, that says the.
You can't call everybody, but.
Well.
Didn't we, didn't we make this clear by saying that no one under twenty hours gets holiday pay?
I thought it was very clear.
I don't know how much clearer we can make it. I'm certainly not going to sit and call all the department heads and commissions and tell them that they can't do what's been clearly said they can't do.
Well, I mean, who's doing the payroll? Who's okay in this payroll? I mean, assign the, the.
Department head.
Department head, but we don't have to pay it.
Anybody want to chime in?
Are you saying you have a department head that is not going along with what you told him or her to do? It's an elected official that cannot follow the bylaws. If that'd be the case, I don't want that person sitting right there. I want to get very clear. Well, I think the townspeople should know they have an elected official that's not following the bylaws, and paying somebody for holiday pay that doesn't deserve that paid by or bylaws, as said by the Town Council. They have to hold that elected official accountable, period. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what we're talking about. It just seems like that's what they need to do.
In fairness, this is why I don't want to talk about it. I mean, in fairness, this person's been being paid for this time for a long time, a long time. And that's why I'm not sure that it's very, you know.
But just because we've made a mistake in the past, we're not going to continue to make them.
We need to stop the mistake.
I mean, what we're doing is rehashing what we did before. There's no understanding, there's no commitment by all the parties to be, well, I thought last week we asked to have them all notified to be here so we could discuss this once and for all, whether we agree with them or don't agree with them, that we would walk out of here with an understanding of what our bylaws were.
And they, in fact, asked for the meeting.
Go ahead.
Can I just make a point here? I was never invited to this meeting. I got an email with the agenda on Monday at eleven thirty. That's not inviting me to this meeting. I think there was poor communication on your part.
Same here, and same with Donna. Okay, so I will say that I did have a conversation with Reggie, and we had talked about, she told me that boards have to post their own agendas. And so I gave that information for the PQB to post that meeting on their behalf, and they weren't coming, so it didn't get posted. I was supposed to invite and talk to you and ask you to come, and I did not. So.
I thought it was the select board that.
I am the select board, and so I should have said that.
All right.
Just a quick, quick comment. I'm new on this particular board. I don't have too much hair left, but. One thing I do see, and it's very confusing, is that I believe there are like four bylaws out there that, I don't know which one you're basing this on, but, you know, everybody seems to have a different interpretation and a different bylaw in front of them. That's one of the things we need to work on and fix that may have caused some of the issues here. Though Liz tells me that this particular person was given a bylaw, and I believe the bylaw she was given did state that, you know, that there would be no benefits.
I think they've all, I think, I don't think that's been changed in any of the various, my impression. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think that's changed.
I, I don't know. I mean, all I know is there's an interpretation of part-time official, of part-time.
Definition of part-time.
Right, that's what you should be going by.
Right, there's a definition of part-time employment, regular part-time employment and part-time employment, I think, is the distinction.
Well, there's a, I can read you what Joe Ferris, or the person we paid.
And the, yeah, and I think the research that I've been led to believe, is it ninety-seven is the one that the bylaw that's supposed to be?
Yes.
Anything that she has a date after ninety-seven is. Discard. Ninety-seven, we've got to go back to ninety-seven to get the date.
But this is Joe Ferris' comment in an email that was dated on December seventeenth of last year. And it basically, the last paragraph, "On a ongoing, on going-forward basis, the attachment, attached documents do not change my prior opinion as to what the personal bylaws states about part-time employees who work less than twenty hours a week. I, they are not eligible for the various benefits discussed, and that would be holiday pay." And that's the legal opinion.
All right.
And that's, I'm no attorney, but that's the legal opinion. You look at the administration of the bylaw, Policy Procedures Board is the administrator of the contract, of the bylaw. All right, and I'm not saying, I, I know, I was witness to this. I just heard a comment that Personal Policy had a ruling on it already, and they said that was not so.
What's not so?
The twenty ali, the benefits. No, they're not here to say. To me, one way or the other. That's why I wanted to see everybody here to have a discussion. Ed, this is not going to happen. They're not going to show up. This is all about political gamesmanship, and it's not going to happen.
So I would say that going forward, we need to make it very clear that the decision of the board is.
Our, your decision of our board?
The decision of our board, the select board, is that, and if I'm wrong, speak up, employees who work less than twenty hours per week are not paid for holiday pay effective at the beginning of the next payroll, whatever, we have one in front of us. I don't want to go back and ask for any money or holiday. That's not my intent.
No, I don't want to say, I would agree with you that we don't ask for any money back, but I don't think you can pay, if you're sitting with a warrant article in front of you that you know is incorrect, you can't, I don't think you can sign it.
I'm not going to sign it.
Because we're digging the hole deeper. We've made the mistake. We let it go for a couple of times because we were hassling out the problem. We said we would. I've spoken with Joe, personally with Joe Ferris for length on this, and he said it would not be wise to try and get the money back. So we told the employee, or I told the department head that we would not be seeking the money back, but the intent, you know, the.
And how can someone intentionally take money from the town that they know they're not entitled to?
That's not the issue here.
Not the issue.
Well, to me, it's part of the issue because you're getting.
No, the issue can be defined, I think, very clearly. Do employees who work less than twenty hours a week get benefits?
No.
No. Okay, then that's, that's, that's it.
So now how do we get that clearly to department heads who are signing payroll? How do we get that information to them and make them follow it?
We will send out a memo that clearly says, "In the opinion of the select board, employees working less than twenty hours are not to receive benefits." And we've, the last night, we attached a copy of the memo, which I thought explained the whole situation.
It's been that way since two thousand and four, since I've been on the board. So I don't see anything that had changed.
It's been that way since 2004, since I've been on the board, so I don't see anything like it changed.
I don't, I agree with you, but if somebody wants it point-blank, the answer is no, you don't pay them. Yes.
I'm appalled at this blatant disregard for a order in compliance with the bylaw.
Now, Nilda, you were a select person before.
I was a select board person, and I never had this problem. The board never was refused by a town official, an employee, a department head. They may have put up a fight, but they did follow. The fact that the building, the health, the Board of Health are not here is because they're stalling, they're preventing further action. They don't wanna engage in a conversation. The other part of this is the Personal Policies Board should be here regardless of how they feel. They are a unit. They, they have been elected to serve the interests of the town and the employees. And people are just sort of deciding... I would not use the word, you used rather than authorize.
Can't you say recommend?
Did I?
You recommend, so...
It should be stronger than recommend. It should be, you are, you are not to.
And the other part of this is the department head signs this, okay, so they're in violation. Where does the payroll go after the department head gets it? Does it get reviewed by you, and then it goes to, for payment? How does that function?
The town.
We get it in my office to enter it so we can post what expenses have been paid out into the ledger. And then it goes to the treasurer's office to actually do the testing. You guys approve it last.
Last, we're the last step.
So can Vicky or Donna stop it on its track before it comes to you? Because they know that that's...
It has to be stopped before it gets to us, because otherwise we're, we're, we're sitting here just holding up everybody's payroll.
Well, can we just amend the payroll warrant and subtract the hours from that amount?
Well, let's go one more time.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think it's my job in my department to stop this. If the department head is signing off on something that you have told them not to, to me, that's where it needs to stop. If I were to pull a payroll that was submitted without you guys' knowledge, like the last time we had payroll, you guys didn't even meet that week. So if I had waited for you to sign it, then, I mean, it never even got signed. It's not my job. I don't need...
Yeah, but in my humble opinion, whoever sees the mistake should stop it, whether it's your job or not. Who's ever in the chain of line and says this is a mistake?
So if I see someone else's, if it's another pay, if there's an error, and I stop it, and I'm gonna get the heat from be it the police or the Highway Department because I changed something and I was wrong, how is this any different?
Well, this is, this, you have, at this case, you have us to fall back on, because we've said not to.
Yeah, it's different, Dawn, but this is, this is an elected official, so this is an ethics violation. This is something to go to Ethics Board, because they're violating the town bylaw, and someone is benefiting from, from this in a monetary way. And I, no, Mike, this is not, they're playing games. To me, this is an ethics violation.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm going back to Donna's, and Donna's question there, or example, is... I think the first thing would be for you to ask us, or them, or someone before you pull it. But if it's clearly erroneous, and we say yes, then it should be pulled. But I mean, I think your, your job in this whole stream of things is to ask the question, is this correct? And if it is correct or isn't correct, we'll take it from there.
Now, did anyone actually go to those departments, one of you, and say, "Give them a memo and say, 'This is not to happen. This is the memo that we've signed. Here you go.'"
Everybody's gotten, come on, everybody got Joe Ferris' memo, which...
Oh, that wasn't connected, wasn't there?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we sent it out with, we sent it out with our, I'd have to get the memo out, but I think, we sent out that opinion and said, "Here." I, I, you gotta be kidding me. If you think you're gonna disagree with the attorney's opinion that says you're not gonna pay, and say that's only an opinion.
No, no, I, well...
It is an opinion.
You just send a directive to that department head and say, "Do not do this anymore." Until they get that directive from you...
Yes, they did. They received it.
We, what?
The department had received it.
Received which?
The, the direct not to do this anymore.
I'm seeing it up here. It sounds like the department has got all this information. The person, did that person get a memo saying, "Here"?
The department.
I mean, I think, do you guys hand out paychecks or paystubs or something every week, every two weeks?
Yeah.
Well, the draft deposit, isn't it?
But you get a pay stub with it, right?
Yeah.
You hand something to somebody. Do a memo, give it to every single staff member, and explain the policy. Because if this person is relying on her department head, you can't blame the person.
Well, we're not blaming the person.
Right, but I mean, it's gonna continue, because you're gonna have a fight with the Board of Health person. But if every person knows it's improper, and then that person puts their time down again, you've got that staff number.
All right. Any more debate on this issue?
I would, I would adjust the payroll one, so it doesn't include the holiday pay.
Richard, we're discussing your 20 hours, but...
Yep.
You, we were just discussing this, and we were on for eight, whatever.
Nine o'clock.
Um, it was 8:40 or whatever it was, 8:20. We're talking about employees making less, working less than 20 hours.
Yeah, we asked for our mediator to be here tonight, but we were never notified. We'll look at your mediator back.
I don't think it's an issue subject to a mediator. It's an issue of, of the statute or the bylaw.
Can I ask a question? Why, we got, you got the memo that says people who work under 20 hours per week are not to be paid, so why...
We had an opinion from our weekly partner.
That we pay them.
We had an opinion, we had an opinion.
Go get them.
That makes you the top of the...
So here's, so here's my question.
One at a time.
It was an opinion based on your opinion you were given.
Right, so here's my question. If the opinion of Town Council is the opinion of the select board that employees working less than 20 hours per week don't get paid, and you knew that, why do you continue to...
We have hired that guy to need more than he should have.
Richard, Richard, tone it down.
You told me a memo, that's why I wanted a mediator.
Richard, tone it down. There's gonna be no mediator here. Does this employee work more than 20 hours a week or less than 20 hours a week?
Less than 20 hours a week. She's got set hours she works every day.
Less than 20 hours a week.
Every day she works.
Now, wait a minute.
So Chris, so Chris just comes out, turns his thing, she's not supposed to get paid, or comes out on Friday, she doesn't work, she's not supposed to get paid, so it makes no sense.
I would say that cafeteria monitors work Monday through Friday, and they have set hours. So inevitably, the holiday will probably fall on a day that they work and they don't get paid.
Oh, like you said, but if you was a memo saying that, that's a decision, we don't have that.
All right, as of right, take, somebody wanna make a motion on this issue?
I would make a motion that we strictly enforce the bylaw that states employees working less than 20 hours per week do not get paid benefits.
Is there a second to that motion? No, no second, the motion dies.
Well, no, I mean, I'll go with the second based on the Town Council. And it's something we've already said before. I remember the meeting we were at.
It's already been done, you're right, but obviously, it has not been, it has not been effectively communicated, and that's the part that we're missing. We have to effectively communicate that to department heads.
Right, can I, can I suggest that the motion tonight will direct, Richard is sitting here, whether or not there's a memo or not a memo, he's present when the motion is decided. And it's clear that someone says we didn't give an opinion. You wanna give it an opinion, now's the time to give it. No, we're in the middle of a motion. I got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
We already have, my discussion I want is, we already have this bylaw, spelt out in English. You wanna reiterate the bylaw, fine, but we're not, why are we passing a resolution on a bylaw that's already been approved? I think that's what we're doing, is we're passing just a law. I think if you wanna do something, I would make the recommendation to send a memo to every department head that this is the bylaw, and we need to adhere to it.
I thought, well...
But we did that, we've already done that.
I didn't hear the whole thing.
Yeah.
But we, we've already done that.
That's what I'm saying, we've done it, we've done it again, we're gonna react with it, get it?
Yes.
We're doing this again.
Because it didn't get through. I mean, that's the point of this, it didn't get through.
Right, we did not effectively communicate.
This has nothing to do with the person that's receiving this benefit. It's, it's being fair to all the other employees, because if they all stood up and said, "We want that too," we couldn't afford to pay them.
How many, how many other employees work less than 20 hours a week? How many do you have in Highway?
It doesn't even matter.
One other, that person's not getting this benefit. So we would have to go town-wide and straighten this out with all the other employees who are not getting this benefit and were in the same position as this person.
And we're not.
What, the only I'm gonna say in part of this discussion, we don't know what people have been talking about. There's been distinctions circulating and circulating to a frenzy for the last six to 10 weeks. We have one board saying one thing, we're trying to say another thing. You got department heads that are saying they haven't been informed. There is a gap in communication, which is not happening.
Right, you're right. That's why we're making...
That's why I wanted everybody in here to have this discussion, whether we didn't like it or not. We need to have all the parties here, once and for all, put this to bed. Because obviously, there's people out here that don't understand it. And then we wanna know why they don't understand.
I'm sorry, I missed that part of the conversation.
You can imagine what it was.
Is there a memo here?
The memo...
Can I say this while you're reading this? If there's not a clear piece of paper on the top of that pile of papers that says this Board of Selectmen says you are not to pay your employees, then we did not effectively communicate.
And I would say to you, then that's what we're doing tonight, because this, it, it says that the last Select Board meeting Tuesday night, the Select Board requested an opinion. What request, I now lost where it was. I would say to you, we, we should reiterate in a very clear, do not...
On a piece of paper.
On a piece of paper or email that you do not pay employees who work less than 20 hours.
And that is what you discussed at your last meeting. That's the memo that I sent to you for review. It's in your packets, and that's what...
But I'm, just so that clears up all the misunderstanding is, I, we got a motion on the floor with a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, or reserve?
All I'm saying is, I'm looking at the memorandum in here. Can we look at it right now and prove that it gets sent immediately tomorrow? Tomorrow.
What page?
Thirty-nine. Do you see it?
The memo reads, this, did this go out?
No.
You asked me not to send it.
Oh, I asked you not to send it, my problem, okay. "At the direction of the Select Board, any part-time employee who regularly works under 20 hours a week are not to be paid any benefits. These benefits include holiday vacation and sick..." And I remember now, this was, we drafted this memo at the last meeting, then everybody said they were gonna come, and I said, "Don't send this memo to throw fuel on the fire. Let's get them in here, and we'll talk about it." So this memo didn't go out. I take responsibility for it not going out. I made the decision that since everybody was gonna be in here tonight, let's not aggravate the, the thing and fan the flames.
So can we have this sent out, can we have it due today? That would be lovely.
Well, wait a minute, let's take the vote. Is the vote to send out this memo that was dated January 8th, as it appears in page forty, thirty-nine of your packet? Is that the motion?
I make a motion to send out the memorandum.
There's another motion already, so I just wanna get that up, it's regulation.
Look, yeah, let's, you wanna withdraw your original motion?
Sure, I withdraw my original motion.
Withdraw your second, Jackie? All right.
I make a motion to have the memorandum from the Select Board to all department heads, boards, and committees sent out tonight that no employee working less than 20 hours a week should be entitled to any benefits.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor. Any further discussion?
We gonna change the date tonight?
Yeah, you can change the date.
Did you please stay forward?
Well, wait a minute, we're sitting with a, let's, while we're talking about this, we're sitting with a payroll that must, does it reflect Monday's pay?
No, it has January 1st.
Has New Year's Day on it.
And I would say that you can't change that, because department heads obviously didn't know back then that they shouldn't pay them, which is why I was saying, effective yesterday, going forward, nobody should be paid.
All right, let's make sure we understand. So your motion is to send out this memo...
With today's date.
With today's date, and allow the January 1st paid payroll to go through.
Yes.
Okay.
I disagree with the January 1st payroll, but whatever.
I, I have troubles with that too, because it almost seems like I'm being complicit in...
I would say that that has to be changed.
And I would say that based on our lack of communication, which is very apparent...
That hasn't been an issue since 2004. I don't know what changed.
Wait a minute, let's do, we got Liz's motion, did anybody ever second that, to send a memo?
Yes.
The moment meant, but it's just to send the motion, the memo.
Send the memo.
Just send the memo, nothing about the payroll.
No, all right, so is there any further discussion on the memo? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What do you wanna do about the payroll for January 1st, the holiday pay?
That happened before this memo went out.
Right, so there's nothing we can do about it.
I don't disagree with that, but I, I still think the bylaw is fairly clear that...
I agree with you, but we're making a stance with a formal memo to everybody that's basically black and white. You don't do it anymore.
The memo might have went out on Wednesday.
Right.
But it didn't.
No, I understand.
Just think of the ramifications, and I'm only asking the question. What are you gonna say when your one employee comes in and says, "I want holiday pay"?
Everybody that works less than 20 hours a week is gonna come and say, "I want to get paid for New Year's."
That's what I'm asking, what are you gonna do with those people? Before you...
Their department head aren't making that statement, so...
Sent us.
Yikes.
Can I clarify something?
One, one, one second.
I don't have an answer, Michael. I just, I just think it just got blown out of proportion.
But then, then we're gonna take a care, very careful vote on the payroll lot, warrant when it comes up, now, Nilda.
It's been my experience that when there's been an error, corrections are made to payroll all the time. If they're done within the next pay period, which is, you know, reasonable, at this point, the employees get paid twice a month, right?
Every other week, yeah.
Every other week. So the fact that this occurred, and I, I kinda recall at a meeting you guys had a conversation that she should not have been paid for New Year's Day. So that was in a public meeting and documented. I mean, you have to be sort of in another space time to not know that this was high on the agenda of several people. So I would, to satisfy David, because I agree with him, that you make the correction January 1st, you can't go back to earnings of 2013. Let that go, and then move forward, and then put some protocol in place that would give some stop safeguards as to who's getting that information. And then they have the department, the officials, Vicky and Donna will be able to have the backup of you guys.
All right.
Is there an easy way to track employees that are entitled to holiday pay in your departments? Donna and Vicky, is there a way to track them?
I just, I don't track that.
So you, you can't, Rich, is there a way, I mean, I know you guys know what you guys doing at the department, but I mean, for payroll and...
If you've been budgeted for a year, for payment budget for a year, you're talking $52 from the day. I don't give that to the total count.
But it's also, it's also all the other town employees that work part-time that don't get...
What about the town boys that take off half a day and don't, don't put in for it? That's the same thing.
All right. We got, all right, so we've got the motion, we've taken care of the motion on the memo.
The question is, what do you do with the payroll?
Payroll.
Well, I, I think I'd follow up on Nilda's thing as well, is we need some sort of system in place that stops it, so it doesn't become this big hairball of stuff, it just gets stopped in the system.
Yeah, well, here, Donna, which one of these payroll warrants contains that holiday pay for her?
I think it's under the general.
Which would be the big one?
Yes.
Can I ask you to come up and identify which payroll warrant? Because as we vote on these, I wanna be specific.
Do you know what the amount is?
John, before you go, do you have the wire?
Oh, you need to go, I had to use my, I had to use my I D phone, and you just gave me that. That was the first one I ever had, so I cut it inside of my muscle.
No, I gave you the wire.
So this is, so it's this one? It's this one, so it's...
But if you, if you change these now...
I'm not saying we're gonna change it. I just, I just wanna be, when we vote on it, I wanna be clear which one we're voting on. So if people vote yes or no...
Oh, I see, all right, so that's the...
So when I call this one out, this is the one.
Yeah, I mean, so you don't wanna see this, because we have to figure out exactly how much.
Well, if they vote no, and if they vote no to sign the warrant, then you're gonna have to do that. But that's what I'm just saying, I want, being clear. You guys wanna tackle warrants now?
Sure.
All right. So what we've got...
There's a memo, we've, it's always...
Yeah, we, yeah, that's all set.
So what I've got is P warrant, P 14-29, which to be clear, contains a holiday pay for the employee that's been questioned here. All in favor, do I need a motion to sign?
Can you make a motion if you're gonna vote no?
You can't make a motion.
I, I can't make a motion, so... Someone's gotta say something, or the issue is really gonna die right there. Going once, going twice?
So is it gonna be signed?
I would make a motion to sign payroll, whatever you just said.
In its full, $73,035.59.
Am I on it?
No.
So yeah, I make a motion to sign payroll warrant 14-29, the amount of $73,035.59.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
No? You're gonna abstain?
I'm abstaining.
What are you gonna do?
No.
So it fails. So it fails. Someone want to make a motion to sign a corrected payroll warrant, P fourteen dash twenty-nine? With the correction of reducing the payment by the holiday pay for that employee? Because otherwise you got, you got one, two, two and two and one abstention. There's no motion to sign this warrant.
But what, you can't vote?
I voted no.
Oh.
So we got two, David and I are no, Jackie and Liz are yes, and you're an abstention. So, motion doesn't happen.
The reason for my abstention is, I don't think we resolved the problem. The date that we sent the official notices is on, is before, is after all this happened.
Exactly, which is why you should just pay it and moving forward, we deal with the issue.
We're wrong, no matter what we're doing.
We're wrong, absolutely, absolutely.
But the point is, we haven't come to an understanding with department heads who think they're right.
So she might never not be here.
That think they're right. I understand that. But we have to make an effort to bring this together instead of being a bulldog in this closet. Because we haven't resolved the issue and we won't resolve it. If we don't want to come together, it's a different story. I don't think we exhausted all the attempts to resolve this issue.
The memo that's going to go out tonight.
That's my abstention.
Is a solid effort to give the communication to those, to the, to all boards. And so that's clear, I don't think we should not sign that.
And legally, we have to sign it because it's been.
Well, legally, they have to get paid.
Yeah, they have to get paid, right, so.
We still. Somebody can give me some help?
I'll, I'll change my vote, go yes. I want an understanding here, and I don't think we're doing a good job having people against each other without trying to resolve this 100%.
I agree with your statement.
Okay.
Now I have payroll warrant. P fourteen dash twenty-nine dash two. Ed can't sign.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have payroll warrant, P fourteen dash twenty-nine dash three. Jackie can't sign.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just payroll?
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be a whole one, but there doesn't, I don't seem to have enough of them.
Ed, can you sign that one and then send it back?
Wait, wait a minute.
It's in the larger folder.
Oh, there's more in the larger folder. Alright, so I got P fourteen dash twenty-nine dash one.
It's the twenty-nine I can't sign.
Which is Liz cannot sign for a hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars.
So moved.
What says?
Is there a second?
P fourteen.
Ed?
Oh, dash three, okay.
I need a second.
Those in favor?
Thank you, David.
Aye.
Those in favor, aye.
I abstain.
Mike, you can't sign this one?
One time I, because last time I signed, I wasn't supposed to sign. I'm trying not to do that. So.
There's got to be more.
It's the P fourteen twenty-nine dash three.
I have P D.
P D.
Fourteen dash twenty-nine, in the amount of forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jackie, I can't sign this one.
And then I have.
I can't sign it.
W fourteen dash twenty-one, twenty-eight A, in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Everybody can sign?
So moved.
Jackie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I can't sign that one. You can.
Fourteen twenty-eight?
You can sign this one.
No, you didn't, sorry.
I can't sign that one.
That's all done, right?
I got it.
Alright, we're on regular business. I'm going to take open time for the public because then we're going to go into executive session to discuss litigation. And we have a phone call with town attorney at nine o'clock.
Let me go first.
Thank you.
I guess I am assuming that the memo about turning turnovers into the accounting department went out because I did not actually receive one. But I was, someone actually gave me a copy of them and I still am not getting them turned into my office by the police department and by your office. They are getting left in my box. And I thought the memo, I got a copy from somebody else that said they were supposed to bring them up to my office. That's not.
That is, that was correct. Memo?
That was everybody. I did not see it in my box. It was not Reggie, it was not in my box.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
It was not in my box.
Wait a minute. Let's keep this under control here before I lose my control. You know, we're not going to get into this. We all know the situation in this room and this building. So we're going to tone it down and you're going to talk to each other with respect and you're not going to interrupt each other. Or I'll do the interrupting.
My apologies.
Alright. We will reiterate the memo out to everybody again. Reggie, you will deliver ours to her office now, and I will talk to, and send, I will talk to the police chief about it also.
And they should be turned over in a reasonable amount of time. Right?
I don't know what a reasonable amount of time is, but certainly it's expected they would be turned in with inappropriate amount of time, a reasonable amount of time is certainly. I don't know what a number is. I don't know whether that's a day.
A week is kind of a long time.
My turnover, I get two copies. I just bring it right upstairs and take mine to my office.
It's a reasonable amount of time. I mean, personally, I don't hold on anybody's checks because someone might want to go down to their checkbook. So every day I turn in checks, or at least every other day.
They should certainly get turned in, I assume, within 24 to 48 hours of receipt.
And I'm only bringing this up because the auditors made a big point that this was a big fraud. And I just want to, as we read the papers, the audit was all over the papers. We're just trying to make sure that what they want to happen, happens. So that when they come back in March, we don't have this on our report once again.
I spoke to the chief, I'll speak to him again. Alright.
I have one, one thing.
Yeah.
The Friends of Library are having a fundraiser on February 7th.
Good for you, David.
At Edward's Library. It's, it's February 7th, Friday. It's a wine tasting with donations. I think it starts around five o'clock. This is the prelude to they're going to have a mini golf as well within the library. It's set up like little mini golf thingies where sponsors can sponsor holes. And this is all for, by the Friends of Library to raise money for said library.
When is it?
February 7th is the wine tasting. And sometime after that, I think the next day, they're going to have the mini golf.
For kids.
Well, it's inside the library.
So kids could go, it's not on the same night as wine.
Back to open time for the public, anybody else? Oh, Nilda.
I gave my, I just.
Yes, you did.
I have a, I hope what will be a supportive response from this board. For two and a half years, the senior center.
Uh-oh.
Has been waiting for a sink. A hand washing sink. We have gone through changes in the board of health. We have not been able to do, to be in compliance in terms of regulations for food handling safety. We have the plumbing inspector, we have another plumbing inspector. They make us go through hoops in terms of what needs to be done and then nothing becomes of it. It's been on your agenda for who knows how long. And we had an estimate that, I think was there a amount of eleven hundred dollars? It seems like you guys can make decisions about other things. I know, I know reserve is low, I know that. But we have been in that building, I mean, in that location and basically doing on our own. Because we don't feel that we have the select board on board in terms of the importance of a hand washing sink. And so I, we have our board meeting tomorrow. I would be elated and they would be very happy if you guys can take action tonight and say to the finance committee, give these guys eleven hundred dollars and give them their sink.
Is that really how much a hand washing sink costs?
Eleven hundred dollars for a sink?
Well, no, no, it's that they have to do a cutout, they have to do the cutout.
I know, I know, but I don't see it eleven thousand dollars.
Eleven hundred?
Eleven.
Eleven hundred.
We included that in our budget. So we have the money. When we did the budgets last year, we included that hand washing sink in the.
So what's the delay?
The compliance issue.
What compliance?
Well, the plumbing inspector recommended that the senior center gets a variance. And it has to be brought to Boston.
Huh?
Yeah, so.
A variance for what? Not that you're a plumber?
Well, I thought Jackie, that you told Jennifer that you were prepared to represent the board on that, you know, going to Boston.
Right, right.
And then he said variance.
I was trying to get Tommy and Adam together. And that's kind of a tough thing to do because they're both working. I know, it just goes on and on and on.
Rich.
My husband.
Rich, why do we need a variance for the sink, you know? That's what I thought.
Can't you just have a little corner sink? Why do we need a cutout?
Why do they, why?
There has to be a sink designated for washing hands. That's all it needs to be, a sink designated for washing hands.
Now, but right now, there's, there's a double sink.
Didn't we talk, we had a plan to put.
Yeah, it's all, I thought this was all done in Homewood.
So where's that lesson in the house? Where's the eleven hundred dollars?
It's in there.
Where, in the budget?
That was the town authority, the building maintenance.
You sure it's still there?
I'm positive. We, I'll pull out the detailed information. We scheduled that.
So.
We did. It was scheduled, oh.
The eleven hundred dollars is still in the budget?
Yes.
In a line item somewhere?
Not a separate line item, no.
No, but I mean in a line item somewhere.
Yes.
Which line item?
The town hall, this town hall building maintenance.
That's, that's.
I'll pull up.
No, I'm not, I question what you're saying. It's just, why wouldn't it have been dedicated to councilman agent?
Well, they did, and then you guys, when we were going over budgets, you guys had included in this because it's part of the building. They did want to do that.
The sink has been on for years.
Well, the other issue is they have no hot water in the bathroom. That's the other issue.
There's no hot water?
They've never had hot water.
Why isn't there hot water in this bathroom?
Because of the delay.
Doesn't it take too long to get here? But the water is hot?
They just got to let it run.
So somebody's got to let it run.
You can't because it's a 10-second thing. We wanted to change all the faucets.
That's true, in order.
I understand what you're saying, but it can be fixed by changing out the faucet and all that hot water.
Right.
If somebody comes in and runs it.
So if they get hot water in the bathroom.
Doesn't sound like a big dollar, mom.
Wait a minute, if they get hot water in the bathroom, is that a limit to need for the hand washing sink?
No, 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 because it's food preparation.
I just want to be clear that I was hearing.
Can I ask you a question? There's, how many sinks do they have? Two?
Two.
This one has to be, this has to be for wheelchair?
Yeah.
It was planned on being put outside of the men's room, not a water.
Okay.
So you can get this up.
Okay, so it's a whole new setup?
Yeah, there's a whole, one market.
They're not utilizing what was in the kitchen?
No, that's where the last part I heard.
That's where eleven hundred dollars. They got to cut.
And we did get rid of this. I mean, it's, you know, it's been a while, so those bids may, probably will not hold. Increases do occur, but I think that, you know, the senior, the friends of the council would, would step up and, you know, make a differential contribution within a reasonable amount. But I, I, I think it just would make them feel that they, you know, counted that they are doing things on behalf of the seniors and that they could move ahead and do other things.
So what is this, Tom, what is this? He says yes and he, your work says no and we're in limbo, right? The money's there.
The report that Adam told me was, they're trying to get a commercial kitchen in here after they wanted to. In order to do that, you need a grease trap.
But after what?
In order to do grease traps, it's kind of a separate system with kitchen things up to handle.
For hand washing sink, grease trap?
Well, no, they want to make a commercial kitchen out of it.
No way.
It doesn't accept it.
We've said that since day one, they can't have a commercial kitchen here.
No.
Probably lose the sink outside, not a water, tie into the hot water, cold water, pipe to the red out wall was what we need to deal with.
How many people do you want to cook for? How many people do they want to cook?
They can't.
They can't.
No, 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 this is why.
Subject tank.
This is subject system will handle.
The other part of this is we can't actually cook in the kitchen. We can use the dishwasher. And the only thing we're using it for is for the food that gets brought in. If it needs to be warmed up in the oven, that's done. There's certain utensils and things that need to be washed. The hand washing in terms of the people that are preparing is important. And so that's, that's really what we're addressing. We're not even looking at having a full lunch, a prepared meal for anybody in the near future because it's just not doable.
Well, you did want to fry it later at one point.
Yeah, but they're not, they're, they're not getting any.
We won't talk about frying it.
No.
Because that's another.
Alright.
Don't even go there.
Does anybody want to do anything? Does anybody want to do anything about the?
I'll go in on Sunday and I'll do it myself.
No.
You're not a plumber.
Does anybody want to do anything about the senior center sink, hand washing sink?
Well, I think.
Just authorize the packages. So how do we get to them?
I make a motion.
They'll bill to Reggie, Reggie will pay the bill. Just get a three, they got to have three phone digits.
We have three bids that.
But they probably.
Yeah, yeah, we have to revisit that. But if I go there tomorrow, I'm saying.
If they put the hand washing sink in, is this going to tie into the same hot water line in the bathrooms? So that if they run the.
Yeah.
So if they run the water in the hand washing sink, it'll bring hot water into the.
Yeah, but they got to change the faucet.
No, but if they, they, instead of changing the faucet in the bathroom. Bring the hot water into the hand washing sink, which will get it closer to the.
But it's still a long distance from the.
Oh, it's still long, yeah.
Point.
That issue at one time that the water, when we were using the water, it was, the bathrooms up here were losing pressure or something. Is that no longer the case? No? Okay.
Because those are all small flows.
Alright. Yes, somebody please.
May the morning authorize the senior center to put a hand washing sink in their kitchen?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
You still got to go.
You called me Reggie?
I mean.
Nilda.
I'm Nilda.
Mrs. Cohen.
Mrs. Cohen.
You need to, you, you don't forget, you still have to go through the process of dealing with the building inspector and the plumbing inspector.
Look at the difference.
I don't think.
George, have a comment? Do you have a comment? Time for public?
No, boy, God, Reggie.
Are you kidding? Come on, something. Reggie, Reggie, do you need anything else?
Thank you.
Do you need anything else?
Thanks, Nilda.
Bye, Nilda.
Oh, you guys say, okay, that's right, I'm sorry.
I think it'll bring up a case. Over 20 hours. I use that one to put the sink in.
Yes, right there.
Alright, then we'll do that next. Go ahead, you're on.
Happy New Year, David.
Good night, Nilda.
Thank you.
You've got the floor. Well, we're not going into executive session yet. You're here for interesting things.
I would just like to talk about Hampshire Council of Governments, the Hampshire Power Quarterly saving summary. I did some research on it. And what I found is their rates, their adder rates. adder rates have gone up.
Hey, Donna, before you go, there, I see on here there's a bill warrant, I didn't have a bill warrant.
That was that 14-28A.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought we were missing one, excuse me, I didn't want you to get away. I apologize.
Anyway, I'm saying that the HCOG rates, okay, their adder costs have gone up substantially from, if you look at April, I mean, 2012, compared to what their rates are now, and the January, February, and March, the total that we had to pay them above the West Miko, Womiko bill was 5,427 dollars and 93 cents. Look at, if you did...
They took away the profit sharing, I thought, as well.
I think they've gone up on their adder.
What's that?
Um, it's the, their, you know, they take a certain amount off of the, if you, if you look at this, okay, they multiply, okay, this is their cost, the rate, by the usage, how much electricity was used, and then that money goes up to here, okay?
So this number times this equals this?
It equals, yeah, this, that's, that's Hampshire Council of Governments, okay? So then, um, th- this is the savings, okay, because that's what, we paid them, okay, rather than this to, to Western Mass.
So instead of paying Western Mass Electric 4,700 dollars, we paid the HCOG 30, 3,000 dollars.
Right.
So there's a savings of 1,600 dollars.
Right, but now, this year, in 2013, the rates have gone up substantially and we're paying a lot more, and our agreement, contract is now, they made an amendment, and then the way I even got, where, the way I even got onto this is because the, in the amendment, they're saying that, because a lot of towns are involved in this, that the, the state utilities has said that we can be individually, these prices, but now, things have changed and the rates have gone up, and they're charging us a lot more money than they should. And besides that, they charge us 4,500 dollars, 4,528 dollars annual dues. On top of all those other...
That HCOG goes to... That's, that's for a lot of other things.
Yeah, that's...
Has nothing to do with that.
Okay.
So what I would recommend is that they have a, they have administrator there, his name is Todd.
No, it's Greg, Greg, uh...
Is Todd lead?
No, Craig Rogers, he's the guy in charge of this, actually sent me a memo this week about this.
Well, maybe there's someone from their office.
And they should come here and talk to you, because I, I don't think, um, this is, some of these are only three or four, uh, three-month spreads, and I had some concerns on the water department side, because for three months they were, the savings were higher, they were more beneficial with Western Mass, but when I took the whole year into it, I was still at 3,000 or 4,000 dollars. But things are changing because, like anything else, they're, they're pushing for, people buy their stuff on the stock market.
Right.
They bought on the stock market, and if you give a long-term commitment, or you're at the end of a long-term commitment, it's not as healthy as it was before, all right? So, they're, they're talking about a new long-term commit with, with better rates, but the market is floating all over the place, I wish this was oil, gas, and electric, because it would be a lot cheaper for everybody.
When we first signed up though...
But Western Mass Electric is one of the most expensive electric companies in, in the state, not New England.
Right.
But Rogers and the COG have done an outstanding job over the years saving money. There has been a problem, I think, with some of their investment, because they, they had a fixed rate for us, if you remember, and we had, real good.
But we had us...
They backed it up, they guaranteed it.
But we also had profit sharing with that as well, at the end, and, and that got changed as well, a year or two into it.